I want to call on the order of the Amberly Village Council Meeting of June 17th. Please call the roll.
Bardock?
Here.
Conway?
Here.
Hattenbach?
Here.
Kaymine?
Here.
Muthing?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Larmer?
Here.
McDonough?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Hey.
Here.
And if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of our minutes from our last meeting. Those minutes were circulated in the council package. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, we can consider the minutes approved. We'll now have the finance report for April 2019.
Including your council packet is the UAN report for the month of April. It provides some summary comments as it relates to the finances for the general fund throughout the month of April. The most significant earnings, the most significant revenue source we have is the earnings tax. And during the month of April, we collected $931,000. That was up about 36% from April of 2018's earnings tax collections. Overall, we have collected $1.4 million, which represents about 53% of what we had estimated for 2019. The village did receive a little over $237,000 from through Hamilton County. This would be the first half balance of real estate property tax that was due to the, to the village. We also took in a little over, a little less than $4,000 in local government funds. Those were coming through the state of Ohio. So the total revenue for the month of April was just a little less than $1.3 million. Overall, what we've collected year-to-date is $2.3 million, which represents about 47% of what we had estimated when the budget was prepared for 2019. On the expense side for the general fund, expenses for the month, $383,000. And our year-to-date expenses of $1.7 million puts us about having expended about 33% of the budget thus far, because the budget is a $5.2 million general fund budget. And that leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance at the end of April of $5.3 million.
Okay, are there any questions for the manager? We'll move on to the next item. And this evening, we have a resident who's going to address counsel, Colin Driscoll.
I read over some information and gleaned it from that. So this is kind of a summary of that, and it's font's kind of small, so I'll read it pretty directly.
First, state.
Oh, my name, Colin Driscoll, 6600 Ridge Road. Sorry, I forgot about that. I'm not opposed to a civic organization purchasing or leasing property on Amberly Green. I am opposed to giving access to over 30% of our best developable acreage for minimal compensation. At one time, we were $6.2 million in debt on this property, roughly $70,000 per developable acre. According to Land Development Committee meeting minutes and council minutes, we appear to be following what I consider best practices similar to the process utilized with the North Site development. The need was recognized in quote, "We need to move from concept to deliverable plan." Another quote, "Amberly Village does not have the skill base within its administration to take this next step on its own." The need was addressed and qualified. The village manager, with guidance from the committee, created a 19-page document seeking letters of interest from qualified developers. We listed our objectives, some of which were first listed maximize economic benefit for the village, another minimize village financial contribution. The committee recommends that council and the village manager pursue options incorporating the following four concept categories. For the sake of time, I'll just list one. Institutional slash corporate envisioned as a high-revenue generating entity. The aspect of this, the recommended development plan is foundational to the other concept categories. Village manager publishes this document seeking interest. Four qualified development groups responded. Qualified developers were interviewed. In my mind, our developer would be presenting to the committee and eventually council a holistic, synergistic, economically beneficial plan where village fiduciaries would study the financial and qualitative aspects of the plan and make an objective decision. A conclusion was reached by the committee. Quote, Mayor Muthing reported the committee recommended Amberly Development Partners. If for some reason the village cannot move forward with Amberly Development Partners, the committee selected Dove Limited next. A path forward is proposed. Mayor Muthing makes a motion to have the village manager negotiate a pre-development agreement. The motion passes. The pre-development agreement moves back and forth between parties. Changes are suggested, changes are made. The agreement goes to full council for a vote and fails. The failure appears primarily to be over a one-year exclusivity clause given to an earlier group, a couple years earlier. A solution to that problem is sought. Counselperson Kaymine asked her solicitor about options going forward. Quote, "Mr. Frank stated the measure could be brought back to the next council meeting where the committee could have another land development meeting and bring it back from there." End quote. Another quote, "Mayor Muthing stated there were no plans for another land development committee or meeting to discuss the agreement." Do best practices align with what follows beginning in April 16? Just a couple things. We don't try and iron out what look like minor differences with ADP. We don't reach out to our backup developer, Dove Limited. JCC seems to be given preferential treatment. JCC sends a letter expressing their desire to pursue for Amberly to pause the process so they can make a proposal. This letter comes in seven months after the deadline. We pause and accommodate. In earlier council meeting minutes, I find quote, "Mayor Muthing commented that he and the village manager have met with Mark Fisher and assured that there will be a requirement to work with the JCC to incorporate them into the plan." End quote. My question is, has our negotiating ability with the JCC been compromised in any way? When I look to Ohio Revised Code on qualifications for municipal officers, there's an oath, one of which says, "The oath, the officer will faithfully act honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office." My one-word summary of that statement is that they're a fiduciary. And then, you know, I look at Amberly Code on disposition of property. And among other things, it says, "Use reasonable means to advertise a property via competitive bid, auction, or market listing." That's like we followed on the North Site. It also states, among other things, "The village shall receive fair return in consideration for conveyance of the real property." Council acting as our fiduciary, in my mind, should have followed this initial path. Hire a professional development group. Let that group negotiate with and make the determination if the JCC could be incorporated in a way that makes economic sense to the project as a whole. Our village charter also states, "Residents have reserved to themselves the right of initiative and referendum, a powerful tool." Based on the voter turnout in our last election, general election, roughly 200 signatures would be sufficient to move a petition forward. And that's the end of what I, my comments.
Does anyone have any questions?
And again, that's a summary of a lot of pages over there.
I guess my question is, what, what is the overarching point you would like us to take? Because I, I mean, I follow, I follow the chronology and I don't dispute any of the kind of sequence of events. Are you saying that we should not be working with the J at all? Or that we should be having a developer instead of working directly to the J? Or I'm?
Well, I think that was the conclusion of the Land Development Committee at the beginning was, you know, to, to put out an RFP, 19-page RFP, you know, talks about the village, talks about what we're looking to get accomplished. And we put it out to bid, basically, who's interested. We got four groups that came back with an interest. Interviews were given, two were selected. It started to move forward on the one. It seemed to drop on a technicality. We had a backup plan with Dove Limited. And, and I didn't see where anything was followed up on that. So my concern was moving from that kind of model, you know, holistically of the whole property to, you know, negotiating individually. And, you know, we just don't know how that kind of works. You know, from a transparency and all that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So I'm on the Land Development Committee, and I specifically recommend, recollect that Amberly Development Partners was selected because we liked the plan. We, the plan was as unintrusive of any plan that was presented. It left the most amount of green space. And then, when that didn't pass in a vote, if I recall correctly, ADP did not want to proceed further.
Yeah, they withdrew a few days later, from what I could tell.
Based on the reasons that the most unintrusive plan did not pass this council, no other plan was going to pass, no other plan was going to be able to move forward. We had reached a point where there seemed to be a disagreement among council even as to what, wherever that property was going to be developed. And it's probably in the book, but didn't, you didn't mention it in your timeline. After the four were presented, I believe that is when we brought in several experts in different areas of development to, who analyzed the property and sort of set us straight on what would be feasible and what would not be feasible due to the constraints of topography, elevation, access. And we, I don't, I'm not sure what the, you know.
Yeah, I think I saw in 2012 to 2015, about 15 of those meetings happened. You know, there were a lot of experts brought in. And then, I think that's where, you know, we don't have the expertise, this isn't our expertise.
Right, well, that's all important information that brings us to where we are today. Those meetings were eye-opening to, to the Land Development Committee and most likely to all of the council members who attended them.
Anything else?
Thank you. Driscoll, first of all, thanks so much for coming here and sharing, sharing your summary of events. The only thing I wish to add is it's unfortunate that council had an impasse when it finally had to vote on this. And, because as you know, and as you've just described, council and land committee spent a lot of time on this whole process, a whole lot of time. And, and so that's why I, it's too bad council came to an impasse. But having said that, there was really nothing, my understanding was there was really nothing else on the table until the J came forward with its proposal. But thank you again.
Yeah, I just saw that Dove is a backup if ADP didn't work out. I was thinking some, you know, there'd be some, bring them back in if it's just not going to work with Amberly Development Partners. And I kind of wondered why that didn't, at least I didn't see that happen from what I could see there. And I might be not seeing everything, obviously.
The only, the only thing I would like to add, and I've stated this many times, is that the $6 million was based on the negotiated price that the Ridge Club at the time, the Sanibel, had with a home developer. That $6 million is based on maximizing, I mean minimizing the green space on that property. As soon as you say you want to limit the amount of development on that property, the price goes down substantially. And so, you know, as soon as the residents came out and said, you know, "We want to minimize the amount or maximize the amount of green space," it's no longer worth $6 million. We can say it was, but it was, it was worth $6 million when you, when you maximize development. A lot of, you know, one-acre homes was what that price was, was, I think it was over 100.
160 maybe?
No, it could have been 160, because it's only 130 acres.
Yeah.
In a, in a one-acre home. But it, as soon as you do that, the price goes down. Anything else?
Have you had it appraised under those newer parameters or?
I mean, again, what parameters? You know, the value of a park is zero. You know, if you, the value of French Park, which has a deed limitation on it, that it can only ever be a park, the value is zero. You can't sell it. No one's going to develop a park unless it's an amusement park, because they can't make any revenue.
So in the, in the proposals from Amberly Development and Dove Limited, there's no estimate of any kind of financial?
They were, all the, you know, they, they weren't proposing to buy the property. They were proposing to come up with a development plan for the property.
Which met these goals set out in the?
Of maximizing green space and things like that. But it, you know, didn't ever say you have to have, you know, half the property be green space. They were supposed to come back with a proposal that says, here it is, that it would be more, things like that. But it wouldn't have been worse to me. We've been told that by developers. Is that the only way you can get in, probably right now, you couldn't get it anyway, because there's not demand for that type housing. So, you know, if you want to limit the amount of development in, probably you have to limit the amount of development now because of traffic that has developed over the last 10 years. The price goes down.
Okay, I just, I didn't see the proposals that they, I saw the Q and A. I never really saw any documents for the original proposals.
Any of them put a value?
Yeah, you would think they could maybe establish a range of values given a range of green space type. And, you know, I know you can't finish all this right here.
I just want to add that those proposals that we had at that time were less specific than what we have from the JCC right now. Those were concepts that they were thinking might, they might be able to bring about. They were not like proposals from company A and company B and developer A and B. So it's almost not apples to apples to say what we're doing now versus what we were, what we had in front of us then. That, that was where we were with the J a year and a half ago, is where we were with those developers, essentially.
Yeah, really, just to continue, Ms. Conway sort of shared, you know, what, what came before us were concepts. There were escape clauses for everyone. So there was, a lot of things could have happened that would have ended up in, in parties, you know, deciding to split. So, yeah, just to, just Ms. Conway's point, I mean, nothing was really beaten.
Yeah, I just see, you know, maybe they had three months to put something together, a couple months. I mean, the response was due end of August. Now, we've given, the JCC signed on April 18th of 16, and that's over three years. So obviously, I would expect their proposal to be dramatically more developed than somebody else had they been given more time to move forward. And we could have ended that at some point as well if it wasn't going in the right direction. But.
Okay, Scott, did you want to add anything?
I'm just a little perplexed, because that was, that was years ago, Mr. Driscoll. That was not, that's happened, that's done and over with. And there was nothing in those proposals that council wanted to move forward with. It was not a technicality. Council could not come to consensus on any of those developers. And so, when that developed, the last developer withdrew, that's also about the same time that the JCC raised their hand and said, "Why don't you give us an opportunity to take a look at the property?" But to say that this has been going on for the last three years and that we could have thrown the JCC out, I think that's mischaracterization.
No, I was talking about the other, the developers. Had you moved forward with the other developers and they bring, they have time to bring forth a full plan, not like two months, but say, you know, I think ADP was looking for a one-year, a one-year exclusivity. So I would assume over the following 12 months, they would have brought forth a concrete plan. Had that not happened, we maybe would have moved in a different direction with the JCC coming on in the middle, the middle of that.
But I think the point that when council could not come with, come to a consensus, that's when those proposals were no longer relevant. And that's why council moved forward with it.
Yeah, it just seems like they didn't try to go back and iron out what the issue might have been.
Oh, I, I recall there was quite a bit of discussion about those developments, proposals. So I disagree with that totally.
The amount of time?
All I'm reading is the minute, so again.
The amount of time I spent in discussion, I, I can't, I have struggled with description that the effort was not made.
And some of those differences still exist today, moving forward. I, I don't know that any of those plans would, would pass, you know, a majority vote today.
Right, but I think I saw when, it says if ADP, I could get the quote, "If ADP isn't selected, we have Dove Limited as our backup." So I, I looked to the Land Development Committee to move from ADP to Dove, try and work a pre-development agree with them that might come before council that then would either be voted for or voted against. And had those two been voted down, then, yeah, move on with the JCC. But that, the intention of the Land Development Committee is Dove Limited as their backup never came, came forward. It just seemed to.
Well, based on my recollection, there was a lot of effort put into making that proposal work. It was not successful with, with ADP, and it wasn't going to be successful with the, with Dove Limited. And so, when the JCC offer came to us, that's when we looked at that and felt like that was something that we could get, we could rally around. And that's why we've been spending the last couple of years working on that. Because certainly laying the groundwork for that, there's been, been a lot of input. And we're certainly seeking consensus on that and trying to minimize the impact to the, to the community. And certainly, the proposals we received from the developers were going to be much more impactful to the community than what the JCC is proposing.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, there might have been a financial benefit that, you know, comes into the overall. I mean, I think we've been running deficits and variety of things. We're looking at ways to raise revenue. I think that was the first bullet point, you know, when the RFP went out, that we want to maximize economic benefit.
Well, one of, one of the opportunities that council will have at their work session next Monday night is to review all the public comments that have been submitted. And these comments will be categorized so that council can spend time and discuss those and determine what they want to do with those comments. Because council itself has not had the opportunity as a whole to, they've not even seen the comments in the first place, but they've not had the opportunity to discuss it as a whole as to where they want to go with those comments. Some of those comments are going to, we're going to want to address. Some of those, we're going to want to hone in on a particular perspective. There's certainly some education that we're going to want to do if we want to move forward with the JCC. But none of those decisions have been made, because this council has not talked about that. So that's the purpose of, of next Monday's, Monday night's meeting. And their work session is to have that discussion.
Would it be too much to just ask what that meeting is going to look like from a resident attending it? Is there interaction, no interaction?
That's going to, we're going to come up, discuss that in the mayor's report.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think we need to move on.
Yeah.
Appreciate you, your time.
Yeah, I appreciate the time.
Okay, we'll now move on to committee reports, and first the finance.
Thank you, Mayor. Annually in June, we have, go through the process of approving a tax budget, which is a requirement of Hamilton County. And the purpose is to justify our local government needs for 2020. So accordingly, we have a public hearing, which the mayor will call.
Okay, we'd like to open the public hearing on the tax budget. And if anyone would like to submit testimony with respect to the tax budget, you're welcome to come forward. The public hearing opened at 6:55. And I will hereby close the public hearing at 6:56. Okay, we can now open to a motion to approve the.
Recommend that we, I move that we resolve to approve the budget for estimated available funds and estimated required expenditures for general and non-general funds for the calendar year 2020 and authorizing the village managers to submit the tentative budget for the county auditor with recommendations for continuation of the present levy, tax levy.
Second.
Okay, it is your turn. Been moved and seconded that we approve the tax budget. This is Resolution 2019-17. Are there any questions or comments? Not interested in moving to seconded that we approve the tax budget, which is included in Resolution 2019-17. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, be noted that the passes 6-0. Councilwoman Kaymine is, is not present for this.
Second item on my agenda is setting appropriations for two funds for 2019. By motion, we need to adopt ordinance number 2019-4, setting appropriations for the Mercy Tax Increment Fund and the Federal Grant Fund for the fiscal year. First appropriation relates to the tax increment financing relatives to the North Site. In December of 2017, council adopted ordinance 2017-10, creating this tax increment financing district for portion of the North Site. A TIF directs real estate taxes arising from the incremental increase in the value of the TIF district due to the construction of private improvements. Since the incremental increase in the value of the TIF district is exempted from real property taxes, the owner or developer instead makes service payments and move taxes to the county treasurer an amount equal to the real property taxes that would otherwise would have been due had the incremental tax increase been in effect. So accordingly, I move that some $25,000 be appropriated for the fund number 2907 Mercy Tax Increment Fund to provide sufficient monies to pay Cincinnati Public Schools for their, for their portion of the service payments received.
Second.
Do you want to cover the other points?
Okay. Second true of this motion is that the sum of $1,951, $1,951 dollars be appropriated for 2051 federal grant fund to enable purchases of needed equipment for the firehouse.
Second.
Okay, it is moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-4, which amends in the appropriations for the year 2019 as stated. Are there any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, the $25,000 appropriation, we're required to do that because, because of the.
That is correct. You have an agreement with the Cincinnati Public Schools to compensate them for any taxes that are lost. And so, this is required on your part to appropriate this money so that we can reimburse the school district for this fund.
Thank, thank you for clarifying that for our resident.
Do we know what the increased tax, taxes are on that property?
I can't quote that to you yet. The check that we. The check that we received was about, I think it was about $30,000. So in this situation, we're just asking for the about $25,000 appropriation.
Okay, it is been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2019-4. Please call the roll. Barbara?
Yes.
Conroy?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lee Mine? Ethan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Okay, and now move on to the Streets, Public Utilities and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Streets, Public Utilities and Sewer Committee met a few days ago on June 11th. And as we reported at, I believe, April's council meeting, we discussed the upcoming street repair program. So the street repair program is going to be centered on Arborcrest Drive, Arborcrest Court, Long Meadow Lane, North and South White Tree Circle, and Lamarck Drive. The original estimated cost for that program back in April was about $719,000. The latest engineer's estimated opinion of construction cost was approximately $750,000. Bids were submitted for that work. Five vendors submitted bids. Rack and Ballower submitted the lowest bid of about $714,000. CT Consultants reviewed all the bids and found the Rack and Ballower bid to be adequate and complete, and also found them to be adequately experienced and qualified to perform the work. Now, the village is taking advantage of a water line replacement being put in by, or has been put in by Cincinnati Water. And so they're going to pick up about $178,000 of this cost. The stormwater budget is also allocated about $150,000 of this cost. And the village receives about $200,000 from license plate fees and gasoline tax, which will also go toward this cost. The balance coming from our, from our budget. Now, during the discussion that we had at the committee meeting, Lieutenant Bloom and Mr. Chesney recommended that the temporary speed humps along Long Meadow not be reinstalled. Reasons included damage to the streets, to residential complaints about noise. A maintenance public safety staff group has been created and will report back to the committee regarding measures to be taken to address pedestrian safety concerns in the absence of the speed humps. So we hope to hear about that shortly. At the meeting, and this is not the first time we've heard this, and the resident came to talk about the terrible shape that Farmcrest is in, as we all know. And the village manager, Mr. Lomer, and the committee acknowledged her complaints. I mean, we've all been on that property, and it is in terrible shape. And Farmcrest is a high priority of the village. Mr. Lomer shared how the village has unsuccessfully applied for road repair grants three times, and he's now exploring alternative ways of financing. Importantly, just to share, Farmcrest has a concrete base, and because of that, the cost of replacing that street is extraordinarily expensive, at least, I believe, one and a half million dollars. So before you is a motion to adopt resolution 2019-18, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the 2019 street rehabilitation program with Rack and Ballower.
Okay, it has been moved, moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2019-18, which would authorize the village manager to enter into a contract for the 2019 street rehabilitation program. Are there any questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Well, obviously not regarding the streets that were selected, but we had, had, and we're still having some crazy weather. And I'm wondering what residents should do for potholes that are out of hand and need filling. Pass even on my own street.
Residents should contact the village. We certainly have a maintenance department, and they do fill potholes, so we need to know about them. So if residents know of potholes that we're not aware of, we would appreciate residents letting us know so we can take care of those.
Thanks.
I just think I owe a little bit of clarification on the speed hump, because this has been a topic for several years. One of the biggest complaints we're getting now is the use of the temporary speed humps and the noise it's causing in the residential areas. And this is, you know, I've been out to numerous houses in the past month, again, over the same issue on Sagamore. And then the next thing is on permanent speed humps. Well, when we started doing a little evaluation of doing Long Meadow, which has been a street that we talked about doing, what we feel is that all it's going to do is divert the traffic over Lamarck and just swing them around another area. I don't think that, we're not, we may stop some people on one street from going down it or speeding, slowing it down, but all we're doing is diverting it to another street. And I don't think that that's the way to handle it. You know, we're going to increase patrols, and we'll tell people now that the areas that we're getting complaints on will be out there enforcing traffic. You will not get a warning. You will get a citation, and you will pay the citation. Regardless of whether you live here or not, we have to slow the traffic down in these areas. And the only way to do it at this point is go ahead and start issuing citations in the areas. We had the same issue on Elbrook, and we're coming up on that again, where people are complaining again. You know, the last time the residents come in and complained, the first three people cited were residents, and the first thing they said is, please don't tell the chief it was me. So it's going to happen again, so this is everybody's fair warning. It's a residential street, it's 25 miles an hour, I would say drive 25.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2019-18, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with street rehabilitation. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed as 6-0. Can that conclude your report? And now move on to the Public Buildings and Parks Committee.
Thank you. I just want to report back on a matter that came up at the May meeting. We had some residents come and address us regarding dogs on the loose at Amberly Green and dogs under control versus why don't we have a leash law? And so the matter, that culminated a number of complaints. It wasn't just those people that came that evening, but this has been an issue that administration and the police have been hearing about for some time. And the Public Buildings and Parks Committee was asked to examine it. And so we had a meeting on May 28th where this was on our agenda. I think we had a pretty robust discussion. There was only one resident who came, but there were several council members and a representative of the police department discussing enforcement and education. And so ultimately, at the conclusion of the meeting, we decided to encourage administration to keep on with the education effort underway, to ask people to control their dogs more specifically, to, you know, ramp that up and keep going with that. And we wanted to continue studying the possibility of a leash law. So we anticipate having another meeting, I would guess, late, sometime in July or August, to just look at some sample legislation, to see what that, what it, what it would say, what are the ramifications, and to continue examining the matter. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions? If not, we will move on to the Compensation and Benefits Committee.
Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Chair, can I be recorded as yes votes on the, on both things? Or is that not allowed? Is that allowed? Okay, that's okay. Then never mind. Okay, so the Compensation and Benefits Committee met on May 28th. It was our annual meeting to discuss our healthcare and dental renewal for 2019. We had our presentation from Haran. The short story is that, so just a reminder, we're part of a local government pool of other communities who, who pool together for our healthcare in order to keep costs down. The board of that CLLGP works to kind of negotiate the rates with our insurance providers. This year, the CLLP, CLLGP Board approved a 6% increase in the medical benefits coverage. No other changes, however, so it's the same plans that we've had successfully for the last couple of years. We had budgeted, or they had, the budget was approximately a 4% increase. It's a little bit complicated because it crosses a, the plan year is not the same as our fiscal year. So that is within the realm of what we are, we are fine for. The result for the village will be about a $17,000 increase for the employer contribution. And we also had a robust conversation about understanding, having a report back from, from Haran with our provider about more details about kind of the, how the, how the sausage is made, to, to, to say the least, about how much is being kept in reserve and all the kind of formulas, because we feel like there may be some lack of transparency there that we want some information on in order to, to feel confident in making these approvals. Our dental and, life insurance policies are going to stay flat this year, so we're really, we're going to make a motion to approve all three, but really the only, the only increase is our medical. And there's one other thing, I think that's it. So we are, I'd like to move that we approve the medical, dental, and insurance plans for this year. This is resolution 2019-19. Yes.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2019-19, which, which would approve the, the health insurance plan increase as well as the dental and life insurance plans as committed by Haran.
I just want, as a committee member, I just want to add a comment that the cost sharing with employees, the split of 15% were paid by employees and 85% paid by the village would continue with this increase.
Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2019-19. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passed unanimously. Can that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Okay, and now move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I had three items I wanted to report on this evening. The first is, we did receive notification that Rumke wants to modify the village contract due to the upcoming increase in gas tax. Rumke put the village on notice that they were wanting to increase the per-unit rate by nine cents. This equates to about $1,500 a year cost to the village. From a village perspective, the village is not intending to pass that cost on to the residents. Residents typically pay for the entire amount of waste collection, but this is one of those items where we've elected not to, not to pass those additional costs on to the residents. And then in addition, the, the changes that Rumke was requesting related to the tax increase, we were, we recognize that their costs are increasing. Don't necessarily believe that the tax is what generates that, but certainly we will make Rumke aware that we will comply with this, with their, with their request, and we'll go ahead and execute that amendment. But that will not have any effect on our, on our residents. The second item I wanted to mention, one of the items that staff participated in this past month was training for overcoming biases. The emphasis was primarily on police, but we asked for all of our village personnel to attend. So we actually brought in Sherman Bradley to conduct the training. Mr. Bradley, who has his own company called Good Fit, he trains and consults in cultural awareness and inclusion, and certainly his background has been, has been quite diverse. And while this isn't the first time that the village has, has had training of this nature, the chief and I felt it was important, an appropriate time, to assist our employees with making them aware of our biases, because obviously we all, all share with, in those types of biases. We also did this in conjunction with the City of Norwood as well as Xavier Police. It was a very well-attended training and well worth the, the investment in, in our employees. The third item I wanted to mention was in regards to our maintenance department did provide some assistance to the community of Beaver Creek, which is a Dayton suburb. They were one of the communities that were hit with the tornado damage earlier in June. And since we have been the recipient of communities coming and helping us in various windstorms, we reciprocated and sent a vehicle and a couple of employees on three different occasions to primarily take our vehicle there and haul stuff, because that's what is in most demand right now, is to be able to haul stuff for folks, just to move it into an area where it can be disposed of. So I just want to let council know that we did do that and was very well received. We were among quite a few other communities that were participating in this effort to try to restore some normalcy back to, back to that community. So maintenance did an excellent job of performing this bigger service. That concludes my report.
Okay, are there any questions, the mayor? Now we'll move on to the chief's report.
Just two quick things. The bike safety event is put on by Officer Hall. She runs it for the department. Will be this Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to noon. We encourage people to come out, as well as if any council members, anyone wants to come and assist with the event, as you have in the past, you're more than welcome. Also, we're working on the, police department, again, is going to run the ice cream social this year in August. So we'll be, if you were a sponsor last year, you'll get a letter again asking, do you want to be a sponsor this year? So we're, we're kind of getting that together, and we're trying to keep the event as big as we did last year. I think last year, they did a nice job putting it together, and we'll continue with that.
Okay, any questions? Chief? Now we'll move on to the mayor's report, and a few items. First, David Gladney has resigned from the Human Rights Commission because of a opportunity for a job transfer out of the city. This was a council appointment for one year on the Human Rights Commission. So the council needs to appoint a new one, a new appointee. So what I propose, and more than willing to take alternatives, but what I would propose is, we had a list of candidates. I'm sure people have now thought of maybe some other candidates. So if, over the next month or so, people could send me their ideas of who they, they might consider for that appointment. Once we get the group of possible candidates, we can then sort through whether we want to assign that to a committee to consider, to make a recommendation to council. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Next, with respect to our council work session, which will be a week from this evening at 5:00 o'clock. This is considered a special council session, and under the rules for special council sessions, similar tonight, if any resident would like to speak to council, they're, they're welcome to. The one difference is because it's a special session as opposed to a regular scheduled session, that some, on a regularly scheduled council session, people need to register by noon on the day of the council meeting. But because this is a special session, they can actually register up until right before the meeting. And so anyone who would like to speak at the beginning of the special work session as a resident, they, they are welcome to. Similar to our rules for the council session, it'd be three minutes limited to the session, and then, you know, that could be input. Once we then start our work session, my, my proposal is that we run it the same way we run a council session. This, this will be a work session, there won't be any legislation to approve or anything, but it'll be council members that will be discussing the way forward on that. And with respect to that, you know, we will all receive the comments. I have not seen any of the comments yet. We will all receive the comments ahead of time. They will hopefully be put into buckets and so forth, so we can kind of discuss those in buckets. And it may be appropriate, and this decision that council needs to make is that we might ask the staff to do additional work on some of those comments. We may assign some of those comments to work to one of the committees, like Public Buildings and Parks, or something like that. But the purpose of the session is to really come up with a process of allowing council to come to some kind of decisions in the future. We don't make decisions in the work session. Okay, is that clear? Okay, is that clear? Any questions?
This is in the community room, is it not?
Correct.
I don't know how you're thinking of setting it up, and I don't have an idea specifically in mind, other than I will hope it will be conducive to us talking to each other in a conversational manner, unlike, I mean, this is not very conversational, this is more legislative, I guess you'd call it, so, for what that's worth.
Yeah, the intent would be that, similar to our conference room table, when we have our committee meetings, council downstairs in the community room would be sitting around a table so that we all have face, have contact with each other, and so that conversation can occur. That's the intent.
Great, thank you.
And then, related to, in preparation for that meeting, the village manager and I did meet with Mark Fisher and John Silverman. Mark is the chief executive of the Jewish Community Center, and John Silverman is the president. This meeting was done at their request. All we did in the meeting was kind of follow up on, we didn't talk about any of the comments, because no one has seen any of the comments, but it was an opportunity for them to kind of give us feedback on where they are in their work, which is continuing to do a lot of work. They are doing a lot of work, not only their plans for the Amberly Green site, but also their plans for the existing Jewish community site, because one of the things, one of the reasons, or one of the benefits of them moving some of their operations up to the Amberly Green, if we can make that happen, is it frees up space for them to do other things, which they are trying to work up, you know, a very, you know, exciting 10-year plan of, you know, what they might do. And so that's something that they're hoping to get done and communicate to us later this year. Oh, Amberly is in the midst of looking at what we would need to do to rezone the property. We updated them on that work and how long it was going to take, and then we just updated them, told them that we were going to be having the council work session, you know, recognized that that was going to take some time to get that done. And, you know, I think we both all agreed that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done before we can even get anywhere close to determining whether this is something we can move forward with. You know, I think the belief is, at least amongst Scott and I, is that at least till the end of this year, we could possibly be in a position to make a determination whether we can move forward.
I just want to make one clarifying point for people to understand that as a result of the process that the mayor just outlined, there will be many opportunities to continue to comment. I don't want people to feel like, because the comment period is closed, and there's a meeting on Monday, and you have to sign up to speak, that that's the last time we'll ever listen to any comments. This is a process that's going to have lots of public input over a long period of time as details come into, if we move forward, as any details come into play. We are far from at the end of this process publicly. I think there's some concern among residents that the sort of public speaking window is coming to an end, and I just want to assure people that that's not the case.
Okay. And then, the only other things I wanted to mention is on the Environmental Stewardship Committee, we do have a Clean the Green, which again is a group of volunteers that work up at the Green to work on some of the mature trees to hopefully save those that can be used in any building. That is this Thursday at 5:30. Anyone interested in helping, we just meet in the parking lot. You just bring, you know, light tools and water is a key thing. If it's inclement weather, the event will be canceled, but there will be someone up there, I will probably be up there, to let people know it's been canceled. And then, related to the Environmental Stewardship Committee, the next meeting is July 22nd. Those meetings take place down in the community room. It's July 22nd at 7:00 p.m. And that concludes the mayor's report. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to any new business?
I just got one thing I wanted to add real quick. Just because my little public service announcement for the Ice Cream Social, ESP Media, who does our recordings, just gave us $500 toward Ice Cream Social, so I thought that was pretty nice for Rob to put out, but we really appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
The We Thrive Working Group, it's actually, I don't know if you'd call it a working group, but We Thrive Group has worked through the chronic disease pathway, and their next meeting is going to be at the Amberly Green Community Garden, and that is on June 26th. Is that because I am not locating this email?
I'm pretty sure it is.
June 26th.
Coinciding with the garden class?
Yeah, it's a cooking.
Yeah, that's the 26th.
And also, just still on the We Thrive, one of the things that they're working on with the J is yoga on the lawn, and they have some dates in mind, which we'll all be hearing about soon, and, hmm?
You're here.
Yeah, yoga on the lawn outside in Amberly, in conjunction with the J, and all in making the healthy choice the easy choice, so we can all get out there in our yoga pants.
Natalie, what level?
I'm sure it would be all levels. You can do your handstands, and no one is going to feel intimidated. Thank you.
You want to say something about trails, Amberly Green Trail being one of the top trails?
Amberly Green. That was in, what's that, in City Beet? I shared a link with my council colleagues a couple weeks ago that someone did an article in City Beet ranking the top trails in the area, and the third one was Amberly Green, and it was about walking, just straight up hiking, nothing about dogs mentioned at all. So that was kind of cool, just mentioned the scenery, the trees, the animal sightings, et cetera. So thanks for that prompt.
Anything else? If not, we can consider the meeting adjourned.
Sorry, I spoke too soon about not knowing the exact details, because I just now got an email from Carol Donilon, and Yoga on the Green is supposed to be beginning July 17 and running through September 25th, and...
It's on a green?
Well, it's on a green area. I'm not sure which green yet. It's just called On the Green. So look for more news on that in July.
Okay. We can now consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.